A week during National Public Works Week to promote the men and women that do the work of public works. There's between two departments, there's over 600 men and women that are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, to make sure that our community works the way that it's supposed to. So, happy to have the opportunity to have a proclamation from the City of Des Moines declaring National Public Works Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next proclamation is Jeremy Lewis. Anybody else, Lu? Jeff? This is on our Bike Month.
Yes.
Whereas, May has been recognized as National Bike Month since 1956, sponsored by the League of American Bicyclists, including Bike to Work Week from May 13th through the 19th, 2024. And whereas, Des Moines expansive network of 87 miles of paved trails and 27 miles of dedicated bike lanes support over 1 million trips annually and provides safe and scenic routes that enhance community well-being, reduce pollution, and lessen traffic congestion. And whereas, Des Moines' trails are essential for exercise, recreation, and commuting, they offer year-round connectivity and integrate into a 600-mile regional trail network, linking urban centers with rural landscapes. And whereas, Des Moines is committed to sustainable transportation, as shown in Move DSM, the Vision Zero Action Plan, and Adapt DSM. And whereas, the Street Collective has played a significant role in promoting bicycling, organizing many Bike Month activities, and advocating for improvements to biking infrastructure. And whereas, the continued development of an all-ages and abilities bicycling network supports our environmental goals, including net-zero emissions, and fosters community equity. Now therefore, I Connie Boson, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Month. So again, thank you for what you do to get people on bikes.
Thank you very much.
If you like the same way you say anything?
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor, for just taking a moment to recognize the importance of improving bicycling in our communities. I don't have much more to add to it, but thank you very much for your time in honoring Bike Month.
I know it is. I think we can probably go ahead. I'd like to call order the May 20, 2024 meeting of the Des Moines City Council. Please take the roll.
Boson?
Here.
Simonsen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
The next item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Item number 33 is being updated. The roll call is to negotiate agreement and the regular on a regular agenda items 40 to 45. 45 has been updated. That's our speaker list.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
The next item is item number three. Is approving consent agenda, items three through 39. I just want to make a comment. These are routine items that will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item to be removed to be considered separately. And tonight, item number five, Voss votes no. Item 7A and 7B, Coleman votes no. 28G, Simonsen abstains.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. I'll go to... Our hearings would start with number 40. On vacation of the north-south alley adjoining 811 Roosevelt Avenue and conveyance to Central Iowa Hospital Corporation for $3,800. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by the applicant requires six votes. Jermaine comments from the general public. Allowed two minutes per person to speak and 10 minutes maximum. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none. Is there any comments or questions?
Seeing none. I'm happy to move item 40, 40A, and 40B.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 41. On conveyance of a permanent easement for sanitary sewer facilities and quick claim of interest in existing sanitary sewer facilities and city property located east of Southeast 15th Street and north of East Railroad Avenue for the WRA New Main Outfall Phase 17 Segments 3 and 4 Project to Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Again, there'll be two minutes per person wishing to speak, 10 minutes maximum. Anyone wishing to speak to this?
I see none, Mayor. I'll move item 41.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 42. On conveyance of a permanent easement for sanitary sewer facilities and quick claim of interest in existing sanitary sewer facilities and city property located in Berlin Park for the WRA East Side Interceptor Phase 27, Segment 6 and 7 Project to Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing none?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 43. On request from GT Portfolio Iowa LLC, Thomas Kuhn, Officer, for the following regarding property located at 1427 Fifth Avenue, to amend the planned DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential within a community node to high-density residential within a community node, rezone property from N5 neighborhood district to limited NX2 neighborhood mixed district to allow reuse of an existing building for up to seven residential dwelling units. A is first consideration of ordinance above. B is the final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver requested by the applicant and requires six votes. First, parties in interest, applicant for rezoning, and those within 250 feet of the property debris zone will be given up to five minutes to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Second is Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person. Anyone wishing to speak? Any comments?
I would move item 43, 43A and B. This is a great project and reuse of a building that's kind of been tired and left behind.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Item 44. On assessment of $500 penalty to Super Quick 303 Southeast 30th Street for violation of Iowa alcoholic beverage laws. Jermaine comments from the general public, two minutes per person to speak, up to 10 minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak? If you want to state your name and your address or ward.
Yes, Yuri. Thank you. My name is Professor Challenger Singhberg, and everybody knows me around there as CJ. We got a ticket for selling a young guy alcohol and cigarette. And actually, the situation was awkward there. And I can... Because I want to go in front of the court. And what they did, like the court did, they write down my wrong name, the guy who got a ticket, Dad Singh. His name is Deep Singh, but they write down Dad Singh. And the date was court is 19th of the March. And when we went there, and then my attorney figured out there's no name like that, and they perceived that ticket one day had. So they did the hearing on 18th without our knowledge. And, okay, we did it wrong, so we should be penalty for that. I'm not want to be, I want to pay penalty because something is wrong has happened. But the thing is that one of my employees sitting over here, and here's the paperwork I had, I want to show them in the court when the hearing is there, but next time, my attorney not show up that day, not today either. And the thing is, he was sick, very bad sick, and even I can show you the picture, he's laying on the back of the counter. His nephew was trying to help him as he's not of our employee. And he's in very bad condition. I have doctor reports and everything. And he can't up, and he, when the guy called him, uncle, customer, he said, okay. He think, he's saying that okay means sell to him. But he was not our employee. But think is, we did mistake, we wanted that. I want to pay a penalty, but we not deserve that ticket. That's why I was thinking, man. And, and I have all the videos and everything. He's very badly sick, and I want to be, please remove my ticket.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to pay penalty.
Okay, thank you.
If you need those proofs, I can do that. And I don't know how to go back to the court again.
Hold on, just if you...
He should get the please.
Oh, he gets a five minutes. Sorry. I thought, I guess he gets longer time because he's the young...
Go ahead.
So, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, so, so main thing is, that was bad time, bad thing has happened, but not our concern, we not want to be, do that. After that, they check it again, we pass that time. Next time, we pass it. So, it is like something bad happened, but we not deserve that ticket, man. But I deserve that penalty, I will pay their penalty, man. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I'll move item 44.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the end of hearings is 5:20. The next thing we go to is item 45, which is a request to speak. And we provide speakers under the public speaking portion the opportunity to address the council for up to three minutes each for up to 20 speakers for a total of one hour. Speakers will be called forward individually, and we ask everyone to please state their name, address, or ward prior to providing comments. Please keep comments, Jermaine, and avoid references to personalities or character attacks as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. As a reminder to the council and the public, this public speaking time is not a time for council to engage in discussion. It is our obligation to discuss only matters posted on the public agenda. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff or council follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you for your support of Des Moines, and we appreciate your input. The first is Matt Sahag. If you want to state your name, address, or ward.
Sure. I'm not sure my ward is, but my name's Matt Sahag. I live at 1323 Birch Lane, Lane 50315. It's on the south side. I'm here just to talk about sidewalks. So, and my main request is to ask the council respectfully to change the sidewalk policy. Currently, it's 100% complaint-based policy, which allows that policy to be weaponized out of spite, which was done on Southwest 13th Street, not for public safety reasons, but because someone's just angry about something. And so, I own three properties on Southwest 19th, or 13th. I put probably $300,000 or so into those properties, including my own personal residence over the last couple of years. And so, I want nice sidewalks, and I don't want people tripping on my sidewalks. But the sidewalks, I want, I want to invite you all actually out to come walk the sidewalks and walk down 13th, my three properties, and, you know, as you walk, walk down the three properties, circle back, come walk again, close your eyes if you want, see if you trip. I don't think you will. Because really, the issues were related to slope and not cracks. And so, I want to show you a little bit of what the fighting issues are. I actually, oops, that's not the one. I, I had the pleasure of meeting the sidewalk inspector. That's a picture.
You can put it down on, I don't know if it'll show up. Lay it down.
Just lay it down, Matt.
Lay it down on its face.
In the square.
Right there in the square.
Camera's up on the...
There you go.
You might have to prop it up a little bit.
Tilt it up.
Little angle, yeah.
There you go, right there.
So that's my, that's one of my sidewalks. It's beautiful sidewalk. There's no cracks. Just let it slope a little bit. So that's what we're talking about on Southwest 13th, that 160 people in the neighborhood were complained about. Seven people on my street were sued, and including me, I got assessed a $2,000 penalty because I fought it. And I'm happy to do that, so on half my Reddisons, the people over there, I'm a lawyer and I've got the means to do so. Josh, you walked in our, in our neighborhood when you were campaigning for your reelection, you didn't complain about any sidewalks. And so, I think this policy is being weaponized. And, and so I'm asking you respectfully to consider changing it. I think that there's other communities that have sidewalk improvement programs that will look at various parts of the community and improve on those sidewalks. If truly, health and safety is a reason for nice sidewalks, then we're not promoting the purpose of the law if we're just ignoring sidewalks. And I think it's an old policy within the engineering department that's out of date, that needs to be addressed. But to illustrate why it's really a problem to you all, I think some of you are probably the biggest targets in this policy. Under the policy, someone can come into your neighborhood, into your house, in your businesses when you're seeking a reelection campaign and complain about everyone in the neighborhood's sidewalks except for yours. And it sets up a situation where, like, the policy is literally weaponized. We can target groups, we can target protected characteristics, I can target races, sexual orientation, whatever we want.
Thank you.
So we'd ask you to change the policy.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Lou Ryan Hallmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Lou Hallmeyer, and I'm a new resident to Ward 2. As we gather here today, let us be mindful of the shackles that bind our city's destiny. The city of Des Moines, once a beacon of hope for the working class, now finds itself ensnared in the clutches of corporate greed and imperialist influence. Who are the architects of this betrayal? Connie, Scott, Josh, Chris, Joe, Linda, Carl, and Mike. These are the puppets of the ruling class, dancing to the tune of profit over people. At the start, at the center of this web of deceit lurks Via Transportation, a wolf-in-sheep's-gloving seeking to devour our public transit system, and line its pockets with the sweat and toil of the working class. What is their nefarious plan? To dismantle our buses, the lifeline of our working class, and replace them with on-demand van services, a thinly veiled attempt to further commodify our transportation, to turn a public good into a profit-driven enterprise. When did this treachery begin? Last month, under the cover of a closed meeting, they conspired to sell Des Moines' soul for a simple $35,000. For the next four months, we will not even wait with bated breath. We will hold fire in our hearts, fire in our action, to ensure their schemes fail, expose their dealings against the people, and force them to divest from a genocidal regime. All of that while they simply line their pockets at the expense of us, the working class, and the people who got them where they are today. Where will this lead us? Down the road to ruin, where the rich still get richer off the backs of the working class? Via's track record speaks for itself. After all, in Wilson, North Carolina, they dismantled every single bus, leaving the working class stranded, only to be held at the mercy of a predatory van service. Why do they do this? Because profit is their god and capitalism their religion. They care not for the needs of a people, but only for the bottom line. But we, the working class, shall not be swayed by their false promises and empty rhetoric. We shall resist, we shall fight, we shall stand in solidarity against their tyranny and the growing fascism. But let us peel back the layers of deception and expose the rot at the core of our city. Via Transportation was founded in 2012 by two Israeli Air Force veterans who met at an elite military training program and whose capital is entangled both in weapons technologies used by the State of Israel, as well as illegal occupation technologies that is being used against the rightful state of Palestine. Josh Mandelbaum, who ran as one of the good politicians, is personally and professionally intertwined with Jared Bernstein. Josh is personal friends with and serves on the board of the Jewish Federation of Greater Des Moines with Jared. Jared is a former IOF volunteer who helped load tank shells in the desert, was a propagandist or a media relations director for the General Consulate of the State of Israel, and coincidentally enough, was on the Iowa State House floor without being registered as a guest or a lobbyist when HR 101 was passed, which declared Iowa would give unconditional support and unwavering support. Thank you.
All right, to seat at barfoot, Ward 2.
Without being registered as a guest or lobbyist when HR 101 was passed, which declared Iowa would give unconditional support and unwavering support to the State of Israel, why do we allow a cog in the imperialist, genocidal machine influence us and pull our strings? Let's not forget that the blood money flows from our esteemed councilor's campaigns from Crotto, a company built upon the backs of the working class kept in business due to Greece palms. The Greece Lindas, Connie's, Chris's, and Jones's to the Tunifs, 6,500, 5,000, 2,500, and 1,000 respectively. Raise your hands if you've accepted these. Now raise your hands to acknowledge that on this day, you know that Crotto pays their drivers cash bonuses per tow. Justice and fairness thrown out for only $15,000. How pathetic and cheap. But fear not, for the spirit of resistance is turning, burning in our streets, on our campuses, across the world, and it will burn here. We hold the examples of the resistance fighters around the world close to our hearts and our spirits. We shall rise up, we shall organize, we shall fight until our chains are broken, our oppressors destroyed, and until justice prevails. Together, we shall force Via out of Des Moines, reclaim our pleasant public transit system, and build a future that truly serves the needs of the public from the bottom and to the mill. We will not allow catering to the upper class. We, the party of socialism and liberation, condemn this backroom deal and call upon the people of Des Moines to join us and rise up in resistance. Let us march for we are the fires of the resistance, of the revolution, of the antifata in our hearts. We know that victory is inevitable, and together we shall overcome. You don't need a weathered man to know which way the wind blows, and we know a single smart spark may fight, may start a prairie fire. This moment is our spark. I also want to say, the City Council has passed both, A, Vision Zero Plan, trying to engineer out traffic deaths in our city to non-car users, and also a climate action plan. As long as you do not fully fund and expand DART, those plans are not worth the paper that they're written on.
Thank you. Jacob Rob.
All right. Hey, everybody. My name is Jake Groby. I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I wanted everyone to understand and, you know, be clear here that this study was commissioned behind closed doors so the public wouldn't know about it, try to get away with it. Sorry you didn't. It's... Sorry you didn't. The act in itself, you know, to go pay a company 30 grand to tell them what you already know they're going to say, "Yeah, you should do it," is an act, is an admission by you, actually, that you're going to privatize DART and start cutting services. You want DART to die, because you don't want to pay any more taxes, you want your rich friends to take all the money for themselves, or they steal it from the working class. We need a fully funded and expanded public bus system in the Des Moines metro area. Every study will tell you that ridership grows when you have service that is frequent and around the clock, seven days a week, when people are traveling for work, recreation, family get-togethers, and any other reason they need to get around. Privatizing DART is an attack on our community. It hurts businesses, the environment, working families, immigrants, and people with disabilities. As the climate crisis rages and transportation is the largest source of our greenhouse gas emissions in Des Moines, killing DART is an attack on our young people and a slap in the face to the next generation. Attempting to turn DART into a failed Uber Pool gimmick shows a lack of vision, leadership, and any ounce of concern for the people who make this city run. We demand you cancel the $30,000 contract with Via and invest into expanded DART service. What this could look like is dedicated bus lanes along every major corridor, with a bus coming every 10 minutes at least, bench and shelters at every stop, lifted platforms with kiosks to prepay while waiting for the bus, so that people get on and off very quickly, reduces trip times, and service that runs in the night, so that everyone can be served by DART. The solution, the solutions to increasing ridership are obvious, lots of their cities are doing them, and a necessity for the city and the whole metro area to actually grow. Since 2020, traffic's gotten worse and worse and worse. I drive a bus in Urbandale. Coming here sucked. I had to go stop and go traffic, which is like mind-boggling in such a small city that I have to deal with that. It's absolutely ridiculous. It will never be sustainable for every single person to drive everywhere all the time, but that's the infrastructure you keep building. We have to invest into DART and make taking the bus more attractive than driving, and that will make people a lot happier, healthier, and safer, and it will actually reduce traffic, too. So, thank you.
Aya Salem.
Hi, my name is Aya Salem. I live in Ward 3, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation as well. I just want to also address the contract that this council has signed with the company Via. The company Via was founded in 2012 as a competitor to Uber Pool, and its van service failed, so they converted their operations into trying to prey on cities and states around the world to get public funding, to provide fake consulting services, and then contracts to use their vans and their proprietary app technology to replace part or whole, the whole of public transit in those cities. As Lou mentioned, in 2020, Wilson, North Carolina, a city of a population of 47,000, parked all of its buses and partnered with Via to provide passenger-scheduled rides instead. Since then, the fare went from $1.50 to $2.50 per ride in just four years, which is a 66% increase in the fares. And the city of Wilson is now paying more for the shuttles than it did for its old bus system. And the shuttles cost the city about $1.6 million a year compared to $1.4 million the city spent on buses before, which were more efficient and obviously had way more people in them than a car. And even a researcher at the Transportation Research and Education at North Carolina State University named Kai Monast stated to the media, the Associated Press, that even Wilson won't be able to operate under its micro-transit pilot program forever without finding new ways to pay for it. And he also predicted that they will have to return in part to a fixed route system. So, this is a failed experiment, as we can see. Switching to Via's model of micro-private transit is funneling private tax dollars into a startup that continues to fall short on funding and resort to raising millions from venture capital funds from Israel and other countries. Israel, an apartheid state, whose economy funds a genocide currently in Gaza, which has killed over 40,000 people and continues to kill people every second. We decry this decision that you guys made without any consultation with the public, and we also know that for seven months, this whole council has stayed silent on this genocide that's occurring. And we demand that you guys stop the cowardice and also start to stand up for the values of justice and equality that you guys claim to be for by calling for a ceasefire in Gaza and also by canceling your contract with Via and considering just continuing to expand the existing public transit, as Jake mentioned. We demand to fully fund DART and the contract with Via and cut ties with the apartheid state.
Ms. Micklin Mankum.
Seems like y'all can't pronounce it. So, my name is Micklin, and I live in Ward 1. I'm also here to address the recent decision you all made behind closed doors to spend $35,000 on a contract with the company Via Transportation to conduct a study on the future of DART. I've spoken before this council to address public transit a number of times, and I previously believed all of you to be apathetic about access to affordable, reliable transit. And your apathy frankly disgusted me. Not just because I couldn't have moved to Des Moines without being able to rely on Routes 3, 65, and 6, which I used to commute to the grocery store and my job when I taught preschool at Bedwell Riverside. I was mostly disgusted by what I perceived as your lack of concern, because I've spent countless hours at Central Station, Merle Hay, Valley West, and other locations, talking to people who've shown me the necessity of public transit. I spoke with Jessica and a number of neighbors like her who are blind and rely on DART. She would have been here tonight, but y'all had a really short agenda, and public comment came up much sooner than usual. In our conversation, she could barely express how harmful it would be to their community if services were cut by 40%. I met a man who I thought was just resting his feet, but who was actually keeled over in pain, waiting for the bus to take him to Broadlawn's emergency room. I met dozens of parents traveling with children of all ages. I met residents who are wheelchair-bound, some of them children themselves, whose families could not afford a customized vehicle. I met elders with mobility issues and other ailments who take DART to healthcare appointments, and I could go on. Up until a month ago, I was losing sleep over the proposed cuts to DART services and what our lives would look like if this happened. But this council couldn't even be bothered to add DART to your meeting agenda. I thought either you couldn't see what was at stake, or you simply didn't care. This recent decision to pay Via $35,000 demonstrates that I was wrong. It's not that you don't care, it's that you've abandoned all morals and principles of humanity in your calculations as elected leaders. You're not here for anyone's well-being. You don't serve the public whatsoever. You serve only developers and profits. It's not that you don't care, it's that you only care about money. You care about displacing people who are poor or houseless from the city and the state rather than investing in their needs and providing for a better quality of life. You care about expanding your coffers for the next campaign season, and you, Connie, are willing to bend over backwards for the likes of Doug Gross and the hundreds of thousands of dollars he threw at your campaign just days before the election, effectively buying off the mayoral race. And finally, you care about rubbing salt in the wounds of activists protesting the ongoing genocide. I don't for a second believe that it's a coincidence that you signed this contract with an Israeli company at the height of the civil unrest that's exploded across the country. Shame on all of you.
Garland Armstrong.
Good evening, Garland Armstrong. I'm at 3728 Hubbell Avenue, Ward 2. And I'm also concerned about the sidewalks. I want to echo what Matt says, especially when, I think you need to check on the data on all where the crumbling sidewalks or if their sidewalks slant slightly up, because what happened when me and my wife was vacationing in Schaumburg, it came through that part there. I had to put, she had a power wheelchair, I had to turn it into manual, then turn it around and pull her power wheelchair and turn it back forward again. So, I want y'all to check every sidewalks here. If they have that little slit up there, if it's not flat, then y'all need to do something and make sure that in all of the, for the north, south, east, and some parts of it going to, before you hit like Windsor Heights or something like that, check and see if there are some like that up there slanted or being crumbled, because sometimes that could be how people in walkers and wheelchairs, when they see that, they would have to go either in the streets or even have to, or be hurt by hitting by any vehicle when the sidewalks is all crumbled and slightly up. And then, their risk is saying, "Hey." And then, the power wheelchairs will go dead, and since they come to that bumpy part, and then they don't know what options they have. So, I think y'all need to check on every sidewalk and need a data on it to make sure what's the progress of it, and when are you going to be able to start on all of it? Because this is a risky part. It is not completely flat. So, just giving you some examples of it, when I was coming on, when I was getting on the buses, I've seen some of the sidewalks that is not, it's like crumbling, torn apart, or slightly up. So, I think you need to do that and have the inspection check on it, and make sure you get all the data of it, because this is a serious thing, because we don't know when an incident will happen, and God forbid, people will use the word lawsuit coming because they haven't flattened the sidewalks. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions or comments if you have concern about those.
Thank you. Thank you, Garland. Elizabeth Lees.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Lees. I'm a concerned citizen. I'm also a community relations manager at a health clinic who specializes in the care of patients on Medicare. I work in southeast Des Moines in Ward 4 in Joe Gatto's district. I invited you to our grand opening, but you did not respond by email. And we are also opening up a clinic in Ward 2, Linda's Ward. So, the reason I'm here today is to advocate for our patients and clients, the majority of whom are elderly, they are disabled, they are low-income, many are refugees, immigrants, and cutting bus services by 40% will inadvertently and negatively affect them and impact their lives. Yes, we do provide transportation for medical appointments, but we can't provide transportation to go to the grocery store, or, you know, to go to the pharmacy to pick up their medicine, or whatever else that they need. The fact that you're giving over $35,000 to conduct a study on how to cut services by 40%, you shouldn't be cutting services, you should be increasing services. I travel, I've been all over the world. I've traveled to 21 countries and all around the United States. People that come here to Des Moines, Iowa, from other cities and states routinely tell me how horrible our transportation system is in Des Moines, and they ask me, "How can you guys handle it? How can you deal with it?" I said, "We don't. The rest of us that are privileged have cars that we can drive." I also am abhorred by the fact that you are employing an Israeli company. This company was started by two IOF soldiers, who are part of the genocide happening in Palestine. I am an American Muslim. Many of your constituents are Palestinians and Muslims here in Des Moines, and we see what's happening. We see all the microaggressions. We see you lighting up the city hall in blue and white. We see you lighting up the International Women's Bridge in blue and white. We see you lighting up the Pocanee Courthouse in blue and white. We see you lighting up the Iowa State Capitol in blue and white. And the flags are still at half-mast. Yes, what happened on October 7th was horrible, and I don't agree with what Hamas did at all. But what about the Palestinians? Over 42,000 people have been murdered. Over 79,000 people are maimed, injured, paralyzed, handicapped for life. Many children having their legs, their feet, their arms, their hands amputated. It is not okay to be doing business with a company that is started by Israeli soldiers or funded by Israel in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. I live in Ward 3, and I'm here with Des Moines People's Town Hall. I spoke at a previous meeting on June 6th to introduce kind of a list of issues where the Des Moines City Council had a problem with the lack of transparency and failed to keep public business in public meetings. Some of the issues I named are seemingly harmless, but it's come more and more to light in the past month or two, that secret meetings and secret contracts being signed are causing more and more concern across the city. And a lot of times flaunting open meeting laws, whether it's openly kind of working with loopholes in them or not, it's really flaunting the meaning of those laws. I'm going to walk through some of the instances I didn't get to mention last time, and I do again want to acknowledge that the city council has recently, not necessarily since last meeting, but since Mayor Bozen took over, has made some positive moves in openness for meetings. And I hope that that can continue after this rough patch of, like I said, secrecy that appears to be growing now more recently. We can see this pattern end in favor of true open meetings. I just want to reiterate that, again, some of these things are like loopholes in the open meeting laws, but the open meeting law very clearly states at the beginning of the law that ambiguity in the law should be resolved in favor of openness, and that's very clearly not what's happening here in the city of Des Moines. So, since last I spoke, actually, it was revealed through an Axios report that the city manager signed a secret $35,000 contract on April 19th on a DART study with Via, a company that offers an Uber-like rideshare service, appears to be in response to a March 25th proposal from Via. This company has a vested interest in funneling DART funds from fixed route buses to their own business. It shows the city is not interested in collaborating on the DART funding issue, and is instead going behind the public's back to try and control DART services for what seem to be unclear reasons. Des Moines refused to fund DART, and while partners across the metro worked as they were asked to towards a solution and were able to find grant funding to temporarily fund DART, it appears that at the same time the city was in secret, instead of collaborating and working on this, funding a study to try to, even with the funding, still come after DART and cut more services. There's no good reason why this contract was signed without any public notice, discussion, or comment. I understand the city manager is able to do some things without getting consent from council, but this whole thing makes it unclear which members of council approved of this or didn't approve of this, makes it unclear as to why this happened and why it was signed, and also just makes everything look more secret. I'm hoping this looks more secret than y'all meant it to be, but it looks really not good to the public, as you've already heard enough of tonight. If the city is proud of what they're doing and confident in the decisions they're making, they would have no problem being public about the agreements they're making, about the contracts they're signing. It's clear the city is not acting in favor of transparency and openness. Some other issues that recently happened would be the fact that settlements the city has been settling more and more, especially with the MPD. A lot of times, that information is not put in the agendas. Thank you.
Tara Kramer.
Hi, my name is Tara Kramer. My address is 555 Fifth Avenue, zip code 50309. I live downtown. I wanted to address both the sidewalks and DART. We need an expanded and fully funded, fully accessible form of transportation. When you coal services from poor and disabled people, it's reprehensible. I myself joined the disability community almost 20 years ago. My mobility impairment has allowed me to see the world through more empathetic eyes. I've witnessed dangerous potholes. I myself have sustained injuries from deeply damaged curve cuts downtown. I have flipped my walker over on Walnut Bridge. Whoever is responsible for keeping our roadways and sidewalks safe is not doing their job well. Patches keep popping out, people in power chairs are sustaining injuries, more people here downtown, your neighborhood, are left homebound. They're missing doctor appointments because they can't get to their healthcare provider's office, they can't safely get to stores by sidewalks. The skywalks are now closed from 10:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. every day, which is another burden that's laid upon me and my neighbors. Many of my elderly and disabled neighbors are experiencing health issues from living in a food desert. Your neighbors are dying in your backyard. Downtown Des Moines has become a ghost town. Please don't take away the only chance for some of us to continue to find food after so many businesses have shuttered their doors. Hy-Vee ain't it. We need... Um, we need an expanded and fully funded, fully accessible form of transportation. When you cull services from poor and disabled people, it's reprehensible. I myself joined the disability community almost 20 years ago. My mobility impairment has allowed me to see the world through more empathetic eyes. I've witnessed dangerous potholes. I myself have sustained injuries from deeply damaged curve cuts downtown. I have flipped my walker over on Walnut Bridge. Whoever is responsible for keeping our roadways and sidewalks safe is not doing their job well. Patches keep popping out, people in power chairs are sustaining injuries. More people here downtown, your neighborhood, are left homebound. They're missing doctor appointments because they can't get to their healthcare provider's office. They can't safely get to stores by sidewalks. The Skywalks are now closed from 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM every day, which is another burden that's laid upon me and my neighbors. Many of my elderly and disabled neighbors are experiencing health issues from living in a food desert. Your neighbors are dying in your backyard. Downtown Des Moines has become a ghost town. Please don't take away the only chance for some of us to continue to find food after so many businesses have shuttered their doors. Hy-Vee ain't it. We need to be able to bust to get groceries regardless of our physical ability. I have been collateral damage from your decisions, and I'm here attempting to reclaim my dignity. Here is an opportunity for you to reclaim yours. Thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to receive and file, 45A through J.
It's been boomed in second, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries at this time. I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Is there a second? I would say this meeting is adjourned.